Welcome to another edition of Throwing Out Some Heavy Light. My name is Al Jamal Bindon. We have little technical difficulties. Councilman Juanita Johnson, can I get her a camera going? So we're gonna just basically conduct the interview as audio with her. And other folks can tune in as we get more into the conversation. Juanita Johnson was a city council member for a second. She still is a current city council member for subdistrict two in Omaha. She was defeated in the primary. We invited her to throw out some heavy light to share some of her ups and downs during her tenure. She noted that we as African Americans have always worked as a community to change the city ordinance that can affect District Two and particularly African Americans. We also are concerned about where do we go from here with the new elections of our first African American mayor, as well as a new person in this subdistrict two. So hopefully we'll get past and talk about all those things today. So Juanita, can you start, start on councilman Juanita, can you start off by sharing the participants? Just a little bit about yourself and then we'll get right into the questions.
Um, thank you, Al Jamal. I really enjoy and very feel honored and a privilege to be on your show today. And I'd like to just say thank you for inviting me. As it relates to your question, a little bit about me, I was born here in Omaha, Nebraska. I have always been a servant leader, have had many occupations to include phlebotomist, entrepreneur, just a variety of things. But more to the point, current day strategy, I am currently the city council District Two representative, where I serve on various committees for the city of Omaha, and one of them being the finance committee. I am the chair for that committee. And also I participate in a non-voting capacity for the land bank. Under my tenure at the land bank, I advocated for equality, making processes more streamlined so that individuals could know what they could expect regarding that process. And now we have a cubic system in place, a scoring system, so that we have more equitable processes at hand to allow individuals like individuals that serve or that live in the city of Omaha, more importantly, District Two, since that is the most impactful area of land bank property.
We might be getting into the first question because the first question is what was the most important positive changes in your district in your watch? A follow-up would be, what is your greatest disappointment as a city council member? So if you can keep it kind of brief because we've got a lot of questions. I'll open it up to the audience. Okay?
I'm gonna be brief. I had two developers that were very impactful in my area. That was Philip McLean, three I'm gonna highlight, Philip McLean, also Donnell Brown, and Don, Donald Carey. All of those gentlemen have done development and provided housing for District Two. And what was your next question?
Well, what would be your disappointment as a city council person? You are going off. What would be your disappointment you could share with the viewers or the listeners or participants?
My disappointment is that I would have liked to have done more. That's my disappointment. I would have liked to have provided more opportunities in a wider spectrum than what I did. But make no bones about it, the four years that I was there, I was very impactful.
Okay. Over the years, I've noted that public functioners in both city and county governments have rarely hosted community forums or meetings in North Omaha with grassroots groups of credible messengers. What can be done to change that narrative in Omaha particularly, and even Douglas County, as we would say?
All right. Can you repeat that question?
In other words, we do not have community forums conducted by the city government officials, nor do county commissioners do a lot of community forums in North Omaha, particularly South Omaha. My question is, what can be done to change that narrative? Because I know people who work on behalf of the public and have been in those neighborhoods in this city or the county to address some of the participants or people. So what, what can be done to improve that? To get, get people out of city hall and county government to come into our communities?
One thing that could be done is to change the meeting times of our city council meeting. I understand that two o'clock is a standard, but quarterly we could have a meeting whereby individuals that work in the day and they could also attend in the evening at six o'clock. That could be one example. Another example are, we do have standing meetings. Three sixty has a standing meeting whereby public officials could attend those. Neighborhood associations, every Saturday, there is one or two or three neighborhood associations that are having or conducting meetings. Public officials could make themselves accessible for that.
Okay. And then the other question comes to mind is some folks have asked why many leadership and advocacy don't run for office. In my observation, I see the few doing the work of the many. For the most part, we have Negro premature dementias in our community, people who, you know, so on, who not doing their work and claim like they're doing it. Did you encounter folks asking you to do things for them? Were they not, when they don't have any skin in the game? In other words, were there people who actually do stuff? Who didn't live in your district or who didn't want to put an effort to do work for themselves? Did you encounter that as a city councilwoman?
I think that in the age that we're living in now, where we have social media and we have all this technology at our fingertips, we've, and then we had COVID. And I think that those things have happened to the point where we've become lax. Before COVID, we were a little bit more one-on-one, more engaged, more opportunities for us to not only just, for lack of a better word, just talk, we would spring into action and make things happen. There were, as a neighborhood leader, there were chili feeds, there was black parties, there were a number of things that happened to engage the community, if not on just a limited basis for that neighborhood, but on a broader basis for District Two as a whole. But I think that because we got exposed to COVID and we were challenged with staying at home and not having much interaction, and now with the social media and the different apparatus that we have, we have just gotten lax. And so we need to do more things such as black parties and things of that nature to reignite that vibrancy of us getting together and hanging out. We now have the parks, for example, Atlas Park is a huge complement, something that happened under my leadership. That's underway and that should be breaking ground by the end of this summer. It's a huge walking trail, but it's also has all the amenities to encourage folks to gather and, and do things as a community. So I think that's what has really kind of put us in this space where we're just a little bit laid back.
Many pundits or wannabes live outside your district, want to have an ordinary amount of control when they don't really have Nebraskan roots. Why do these carpetbaggers feel this arrogance to play in the sandbox and they won't even bust a grape in their white neighborhoods or in the southern plantations where they come from? And again, I'm saying that from experience of people who go to people in certain districts to do things, but they won't go to their own city council people. So have you ever seen or encountered some of that? Where people ask you to carry water, do something for them and they don't live in your district?
I think that most, because District Two is saturated with nonprofits, unless, set the record straight, there is nothing wrong with nonprofits. I'm speaking to your question and your question only. Because we are saturated with nonprofits, many times the nonprofit, the person that leads that effort oftentimes is not, they do not live in District Two. And so they are many times, from a city perspective, are asked for opinions and thought processes when they're encountering how the city or any other entity might want to relate to folks in District Two. They use or they leverage that opportunity to speak with those nonprofits rather than going into the community itself, the community at large, to engage that community and get their input. And so there's where that gap is, and that's where that disconnect is, and we need to close that gap.
Juanita, it was brought to my attention that you've got several Latino leaders and other South Omaha residents to support you when the queen mayor told her staff that they didn't have to work with you. After they use that term, a common used term, smart ass quote, in a city council meeting. Was that ever resolved when I heard so many white workers in my different careers use that profanity all the time? And particularly in local government and it's in nonprofit agencies? Was that ever resolved from your vantage point?
From my advantage point, I didn't see that as a problem. In corporate America, that is not a cuss word. I understand now that perhaps to some individuals that is. But if, if we were to go back and play the tape, it was very difficult for the individual whom I was addressing to answer my question. It was almost as though I was pulling teeth. That comment was made because I needed to show the importance of getting an answer. Yes, that, that was resolved because after that incident, ironically, the respect for the position that I held, all of a sudden became very much demonstrated by the department heads after that altercation.
Now, if I remember right, they did pass some kind of ordinance or something. They kind of put a kind of a, what do you call it? Kind of a guidelines for city council people's behaviors. Was that passed and was that aimed directly at you at that time?
Um, as we-
Code of Conduct, something of a code of conduct where they wanted you to make sure you follow a certain decor or whatever when you're a city council person?
Um, that was discussed in great length during the city council member meeting when that was presented. It was stated that that was brought about because of Vinnie Palermo. There were individuals in the audience that attended the meeting that questioned whether or not that was targeted for me. We as voters were asked to vote code of conduct up or down on November 5th of 2024. And the citizens of Omaha, Nebraska voted to implement code of conduct without any explanation or any documentation of what that might look like.
So is it a public document now that anybody can see a copy of the code of conduct for city council people then?
It is now under municipal code, city of Omaha municipal code.
Okay. Uh, now you're, in the next couple of weeks or so, you will no longer be a city council member. What are some of your goals after you leave office or what are some of your aspirations?
My aspiration is to continue to be a servant leader. I was a servant leader before taking the office of city council, and I plan to continue to do that. I passionately went into public office to make a difference. That was my whole primary concern. That was my goal. That was my objective. And I believe I did a very good job at doing that. I see lots of individuals that did take my leadership because I grew up in an environment where you lead by example. And I believe that I conducted myself in a way that others could follow, particularly individuals in my community that have lost hope. I demonstrated that in a leadership role, you could in fact hang out with others where their social or their financial background might have been less than the average income, but you could still hang out with them and engage them and encourage them and try to get them on a positive path to be productive citizens in the city of Omaha. That's what I did, and I'm very proud of that. And I will continue to do that as a human being, and I would strongly encourage others to do that because in District Two, much of that is needed, much of that is needed. Not just one person can lead by example. It has to be a whole community leading by example. When we have situations now where we have the juvenile system that is primarily composed of black and brown kids, 60% of them, and now we've introduced going the opportunity for them to be charged as an adult as early as 11 years old, I think we need to go back to the village and have the community work together hand in hand with parenting to keep our kids on the straight and narrow so that they are not a part of that statistic.
You know, speaking of statistics, if we were asked for racial breakdown of contract city employees by racial makeup, would Omaha be proportioned or again, would it have those demographics to share with us in the community? Because I know over the years I've tried to get some data from them. They've been stingy and I always wanted to share that county government as well as city. When I worked in county government, it was like a little apartheid city. Another issue I'd like to share is that in my lifetime, I've never seen a person who counts the road in on those vehicles, account traffic. I've never seen a person of color sitting in one of those vehicles. And again, sweetheart deals go on in city hall. But my question to you is, are there racial breakdowns of contracts? Do you see data? How well is the city in compliance with making sure there's diversity? And sort of giving their sweetheart deals to people in our respective communities, Latino, blacks, or Native American Asians, whatever?
Well, we hired a diversity, equity, and inclusion gentleman by the name of Keith Station. That was his charge. That was his responsibility to take a deep dive at looking at those numbers. The breakdown of city employees as it relates to people that would be representative of what Omaha has expanded in being, in my mind, the city of Omaha is now a melting pot. Does the city of Omaha employees mirror that? I would say not. We do have a long way to go in order to match what we have as far as citizen and what that looks like in city government.
The reason I raise that also is I know that back in the day, some people may not know that there was a lot of corruption in the police department, the fire department, where they were giving those exams to their sons and friends of the fire department. And so they would get them into those various jobs by having bogus tests and also having where they cheated. And at some point, the Black Midwest Guardian back then, they had a lot of teeth. They took up the court and got a consent decree and dragged the Omaha Police Department to court. And so they won that case and then the city had to hire a certain percentage of African American police officers based on the population number. And again, they did some change. I think they threw the marijuana smoking thing out. But my point is, how is it that we have to pay taxes to literally an all-white government or literally, you don't see a lot of people getting these contracts? I do know the city has a contract compliance guy, but again, he's absent. I've never seen him do anything. I've never seen a report with his name on it. And I've asked for it repeatedly, what are you doing there? Should that job even exist if they're not showing what they're doing? Again, that's all you gotta do is show the numbers. And if the number's not there, what are we doing as a community to make sure there's equitable opportunities for all our citizens in this community?
Well, that's kind of ironic that you bring these things to the, to the forefront because much of my legacy on city council talked about city appointments as it relates to committee appointments throughout the city of Omaha. And what we're talking about is there is a number of committee appointments that are, the mayor is able to identify individuals to serve on these appointments. And then the city of Omaha City Council validates it, approves those individuals that are nominated by the mayor. While I was on city council, many times my vote was no, and my vote was no because those committee appointments are not reflective of the community in which the Omaha area has expanded and has become. So not only are we having a tough time in, in those representations of folks being employed at the city, but we're also having that same type of relationship when we look at committee appointments. Now, you know, looking at that from a neck, you know, from a blank space, you know, that might be good. But when you work with diverse individuals, meaning a multitude of cultures, a multitude of ideas, thoughts, patterns, ideas, then you're gonna get a variety of answers to deal with one situation. Now, Al Jamal, I mean, you're, you're an educator and I know you know that the more ideas you have to deal or address a situation, the higher the outcome will be that you will land upon something that has rich and positive and, you know, huge outcomes simply because you looked at it from a wider lens.
Let me, let me interrupt you and just say straight up, have you ever seen a report from Keith Station? Have you seen a report from Keith Station during his tenure of one or two years that shows the demographics breakdown of city employees? Have you ever seen one?
Um, I, I, I did not see a report, but I did have one conversation with Mr.-
Well, my point is, he knows how to write. He has some degrees. But my point is, if a person's in a position like that, making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, and he has no output, and I will say upfront, I wrote him a letter one time and the only way he responded is because I wrote it to all his female colleagues and then he called me up. Other than that, me and him, we never really talked after that. But my point is, what's good if you say having a dark-skinned face in city hall if they're not gonna do their job? Especially if it's dealing race and diversity. I've raised some very poignant issues or some strong points to say, hold it. There's no excuse for a city to be 25 to 30% people of color and we can't get a job in city hall or county government because they're practicing apartheid. And again, I said, but let me switch on because we don't have so much time for open it up. When you go to another question, I understand you offer your expertise with one of the two candidates. How did that work out for you?
Repeat that again, please?
Yeah, I understand you offers your expertise to support one of the incoming candidates as they move through the transition or to provide that transition to things that happen on a national level and sometime local level. Were you able to find any transitions to the person who's coming in or they take you up on your offer?
Um, are you talking about presently or?
Right, right, right. In other words, we have two people who ran for office after you were defeated. And I understand you were trying to offer some transition or feedback. Did they ever take you up on your offer to help them with getting the ins and outs? And I know particularly in the case of Ben Gray, who's been there too long and haven't produced much in our community. But my point is, did, did any of them take your expertise or opportunity to take it to the next level so they can do a better transition dealing with some of the racism in city hall?
I would say that the offer was there, but there's only been 30 days. And now we have, Ms. Goodwin has been elected on yesterday. And it's just, I haven't had enough time to reach out to her, to see what her direction might be. But I certainly will extend that courtesy to her as well.
Good, good. Well, and one of the things I'd like to share is that years ago, my uncle made this comment to me. He's late now, but he says, the problem with us as black folks or people of colors, we don't always share our collective wisdom. We walk around as individuals, like we get attacked for being individual, black or Latino, Asian, Native American, when actual fact is aimed at our group. And when you look at all these individualistic, self-serving gadflies or these narcissistic or these, or call them people who gaslight, we're not gonna do anything for this community in terms of Omaha. Switch up, I've got two more questions before we open it up. We've had many complaints about the Omaha Police Department and its 63 incidents that were filed. The chief police and his henchmen found no merit to those complaints. Should we reinstate the public safety order to deal with the brutality and corruption in city hall?
As with any problem, the community has to stick together, join hands together on one accord to address these issues. You mentioned 63 situations. I can't speak to all 63, but most recently, we had two last summer. The community came out, one of the incident where the NAACP, the Urban League, as well as Pastor Portia Cabot came out and to discuss the, the ramification of how an individual was addressed by the police department. And Chief Smarter came and later decided to suspend no-knock warrants. And that was a collective effort. My history and what I've seen throughout my entire life is that when you have a multitude of people working together on the same issue, more things are done, more results are done, more outcomes are had. Sometimes we have situations where we go into a room and there are five, six, seven agendas on the table. And in my opinion, that gives the opposing person an opportunity to skirt or not address the main issues at hand. So I would certainly encourage us as a community to plan and put a strategy in place before we engage in these conversations so that we can be a little bit more impactful.
You know, what's unfortunate is I had Truman Wells on the show about a week or so ago. And one of the sad things he said is that guy who was murdered by the police department, as far as you know, nothing has come out of it. And I do know that when I talked to someone else, it might have been him. He said that when the lawyer or someone was trying to get some basic information, the police department was stoneballing and they provided some minimum stuff that was not sufficient to do anything. And so basically there's a cover-up that's going on and so on, even though they got rid of the guy who did the killing or so on. But he would probably turn up in Waterloo or some other little Blair police force where they all cycle around when they do stuff like that. The other question I just want to ask you is as we get right at the very end, is do you have any closing comments for our participants or listening audience before we open it up? Any comment, last minute comments, Juanita?
Well, I would like to just thank everyone that participated in the voting process. During the primary, we had a total of nine individuals running for city council, the highest number ever. We had, and, and that was demonstrative about saying that people wanted to engage in this process of doing more for the community. I think that that needs to continue. I think that we need to continue to express ourselves. We need to continue to engage in that political process. We also need to challenge ourselves. We can get individuals in office, but we still need to challenge ourselves. We still need to participate with individuals in office. We can't just put someone in office and then walk away and not support. That means that we need to also be at city council all the time. We need to engage our new mayor. He can't be in all places 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It takes all of us to do that work. And that should happen not just during election time, but throughout the whole entire process. And right now, I'm really happy because I have seen more engagement, more enthusiasm about wanting to know more. What can I do? All of that than I've seen in a lifetime. So I would certainly encourage us to continue down that avenue, make it larger, make it bigger. But again, let's focus on home runs. That's what we need in order to make a real change.
Okay. Well, thank you on that. We're gonna open up to the participants that raised questions and talk directly to you. So if somebody would like to ask Councilman Juanita Johnson a question or make a comment to something she's already said? Councilman Juanita Johnson a question or make a comment to something she's already said?
I'm not hearing it. Did I'm still here?
Yeah, you hear. No, I'm just, we got, you know, we have people who watch the show Facebook Live, but they don't wanna come on Zoom. And some people don't like to comment because they're afraid of getting uh seen in the wrong camp of social justice and trying to challenge the Trumpite mentality is what has happened in City Hall and county and state government. So I understand that. I a quick follow-up question I had, I was gonna ask you is how you measure the effectiveness of a city council member? In other words, is there some kind of empirical data that you could say this person is better than that person? They've got this many ordinance passed. Because I know you have to work with four other people, three other people, get stuff done, but if somebody was looking at the city council or the school board or whatever, state senate, how would you say from a really snapshot or brief pithy way of saying that they're effective? How would somebody outside to look at that? Not in generalities, but what would you look at?
I would look at their outcomes.
But I mean, how would you measure that is what I'm basically asking. You know, in other, we could say outcomes are good or bad, but I I'm look, here's an example I'm gonna use. When you have district elections, the school board, maybe human members or county commissioners or whatever, and they're ineffective or they don't change the narrative of income distributions or make the community better, how effective are they? In other words, the school board members don't know how to write letters or they don't know how to engage in changing an education system that could improve that. So my point, I'm just asking, is there one um barometer, one uh litmus test that you could look at to say someone's effective, an elected official?
I think that the true measurement is that one-on-one conversation that you have with that individual.
Okay, so more conversations you have, the more effective you are as an elected official.
That you, eh eh, right. I think that, say you and I, you had a problem and you come to me and we go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. That's how we resolve things. The outcome of that is then measured, right?
Right. Well, the outcome would be successful resolution of the measure, not. But see, the reason I raise that is I'm even questioning the whole aspect of uh district elections in Omaha. I mean, I've been around for seventy years and I look at the educational system, like at City Hall, I look at all the people who made money off our community. And I'm again, not raising it in a negative light, but in other communities that made benefits, look at COVID nineteen. Most of that money never went to North or South Omaha where you have the most oppressed, poor people who were suffering. So my point, I'm saying as a person in the community, how do we know effective we are? But again, that's just a point I'm making. Hopefully, people don't take it personally because again, sometime we get to ask questions when we know how to think.
Now, some would argue with you that COVID nineteen, you raised an example uh that money didn't get bundled down to the community.
Right.
Well, we had um on a state level, we had uh Empowerment Network um where they were.
What's the name of that group? What's the group you call? What do you say the name of that group is?
Empowerment Network.
Oh, where they from? I never, I never seen them do some grassroots stuff. Who they, who are they? I mean, are they working with poor people, black people of color at the grassroots level? Have they do they have Democrats to show they've changed the transformation of poor people, people low income? I've never seen it.
They have a book called Transfer uh Transformation Twenty Thirty.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, um and um they have uh they, everyone knows Empowerment Network. Willie Barney uh leads that effort. Uh he has spinoffs, um partnerships. Um and then he also has uh individuals that come in from out of town, um well-knowned speakers to.
I assume we pay those speakers to come out and get money and go back. Oh, hey, go ahead.
Right, so that's just one example. But again, I a- as I indicated before, North Omaha is saturated with nonprofits. And let's go back to the COVID money. So most, more likely than not, the COVID money did go to nonprofit organizations. And I just gave you one name of one uh Salvation Army, uh was a recipient, uh Habitat for Humanity, Land Bank. Um there were others. And so with that in mind, then those entities were to share that wealth that wealth, if you will, to um to individuals that were not a part of a nonprofit.
Got you. I hear you. I understand. No, good point. They were to support and do that. But again, one thing I have not seen reports where they've actually done it. Nor do I know who's on their board of directors or in their systems. I don't know any African Americans or any of those organizations in key positions are the board members. So my question.
Would you say, would you say that they should have reported that?
Of course, I mean, using public fund, of course, you're using public funds. If you're using public funds, it should be on your webpage. Somebody sends you a letter, you should be ignored by Habitat. The executive director doesn't respond to emails or letters. Senator Invasaries, who don't wanna engage in an intelligent conversation. But I'm not being funny, I'm just saying if you're gonna work in a community of people of color, work to help poor people, they should be within your system who will help you to do a better job. But again, something is wrong. We have Department of Education have to return millions of dollars because you got incompetent uh su- uh you know, commissioner who's from South Dakota who can care less about dealing with North or South Omaha. Again, I say that in fact, it could prove letters I've written to him and things that other people try to get them to do. Uh and I'm just saying, at some point, we gotta step up our game, but why should we pay taxes to these entities who don't help us? But let me switch up, let other people talk. Somebody else wanna say something. I can't hear you. Other people, questions or lady reactions to some of the things we're talking about? You know, something hit me that just, it it's it's kind of epiphany. We really don't have a systematic way of communicating in our community like a major media function. I mean, we have the Omaha Star, we have William King, uh the radio, the TV stations do a piss-poor job of covering news if it bleeds to leads. I even had to report it from Channel Three to come on and she ghosts me and didn't come back or do anything feedback. But we really don't have a way of communicating across our community, uh except through Facebook or social media. I'm wondering why that is in two thousand twenty-five. I'm throwing out to anyone in general.
That's a good question. Uh I remember some years back, we had Channel Twenty-two.
Right, and they got rid of that because of Elijah Ali and got rid of Ernie Chambers and Tariq Alamin because they had thin skin and they suffered white fragility up in City Hall and county government. And they just basically eliminated it and Cox took it over. But we don't have any means that I'm aware of that we could turn to weekly or monthly and hear what's the latest inside scoop related to African Americans. I don't know what's going on in the Latino community because I I do know there's somebody here from that community, but I don't know what they're doing over there either.
But you know what? I think that we need to go back to that Channel Twenty-two. Uh because that was, that served a a very uh very much needed a vehicle for us to exchange ideas, thoughts, et cetera. So yes, um we do need to do that. And I'm hopeful that this coming um season, we're gonna get that.
Channel Twenty-two back, you think?
I, it would be great. It would be great.
How long has it been going?
Why not?
Well, I mean, my point I'm saying is it's been going for a number of years. I don't see the impetus from incompetent people to do anything. I mean, I do, again, unless somebody has a wherewithal and make it happen. I don't know if it's gonna happen looking at the client.
The wherewithal comes within us.
Right, you're right. I agree. I mean, I don't expect Cox capable to do anything for us except extract our money and keep raising the rates as they do. But other than that, I don't, you know, again, I don't know what they're doing for us. Someone has, let me see. Uh someone has a question here. Wanda, a lot of nonprofit organization doesn't actually work with youth and at risk families. That is where we need the real work began. Juanita, you wanna open the mic and talk directly to uh Councilman Johnson about that? Wanda? I just read it. Uh do we need more programs to help young people in our community, Juanita?
Of course. Uh I remember when I was a kid, uh the entire block was supportive of all kids. So I don't see any, any reason why we wouldn't uh have a shortage or why we would have a deficit of that need today. In fact, with all, again, with all of the social media, with all the rapid pace, we would need more wraparound services to support our kids.
Is is there a comprehensive youth program in our city that you can, that you're very proud of what they're doing yourself as a city councilwoman?
Uh there are many, but I there again, if we had a vehicle in which we could communicate on a regular basis regarding all the number of opportunities that exist in our community, the more we would utilize those services. I think there is a misnomer that everyone has the same level of access to see what's available. You know what I mean?
Right, right.
That's a misnomer. Um it may be available in a large sense. But does it meet the individuals who need it where they're at?
Wow. I wanna switch up and ask a different kind of question since someone's speaking, but in the Latino community, they have a white city council member called Ron Hug. And I know he was on Metro Board. I've never seen him do anything significant for people of color. He's a politician, opportunist, or whatever you wanna call him. Um and Latinos outnumber African Americans. They're like fourteen percent of the population. African Americans, like twelve percent or whatever. You add the Sudanese or other immigrants. Our numbers would be almost thirty percent or more. And my question is, why is it from your vantage point, I know you guys support the Latino community, why is it they can't elect a Latino for City Hall? I'm I'm finding it strange. They can get one on county commissioner. They got one as a state senator or a couple, you know, over the years. But why is that so difficult from your vantage point as a city councilperson? What what would be your observations?
Well, if I were to look at what just happened, no one came up to the plate.
Wow. You mean, we couldn't find one person to run for office of all?
In order for someone to run for city council, the individual emerged themselves and then others support and rally behind that individual in order to run an election, right? And what I'm saying is, there were only two individuals that decided they wanted to give of their time, give of their services to run for city council in District Four. So the question, so the question becomes why was there not an interest in that culture to run for city council? And so there becomes a different dynamic regarding the psychological aspect of why those individuals didn't either feel comfortable or didn't have enough time in their schedule. Or there are some other things going on as to why there were only the individuals that came forward. You, I mean, we can't make a Latino individual run for city council, right?
Right.
They have to want to do it, right?
Right.
That didn't happen in this case.
Speaks volumes about our community. And it speaks volumes about our unity as a group, in particular, people of color dealing with some of the oppression and racism that exists in this city and this state, and so on and so on. Other feedback, other reactions, other folks, I want to make a question or comment to Councilman Johnson. One thing I found surprising, Governor Pullen had the DRC to make a comment that the reason they lost the mayor or race was because Republicans didn't show up. And my comment back to him and other folks is, they voted with their feet. They didn't find this mayor worth showing up for. I mean, she's definitely incompetent in some areas. The the trial was a joke. Uh the crossroads model was not, well, the city cleanup sometimes is terrible. North and South Omaha has gotten the not great services from her. Um if you look in terms of snow removal, they, as I have heard over the years and I see where they don't always clean the snow in North and South Omaha as well as they do in parts of the suburban Omaha. So the people decide it's time for a new beginning. And again, we have to move on and not have the queen mirror in her position. But one of the concerns I think we gotta look at is that whoever gets the most votes win. That's when we have President Trump, you know? And some people think he cheated. But again, my point is, if you don't show up in great numbers, then who have the the rat you don't want will sometime get in there. And and I think, we, another thing I also want to share with people in Omaha, sometimes we have this thing about being nice and stuff, but one of the things I like to share, people, you can insult and talk about politicians like they have a tail because at the end of the day, you protected through free speech. I'm surprised how many people afraid to say abrasive things about the president or situations they encounter. And they tone it down when actual fact, you know, it's racism or it's white fragility or whatever. So you know, when you got the Douglas County Sheriff's Office that's particularly all white, and until you look at their pictures, you got pictures of all white people and yet they're out there dealing with many people of color, you wonder what's going on in this city. State government, you know, there's no sense of racial equity. I mean, yeah. So my point is, someone has to be the town crier, the prophet in the wilderness to say, hold it, what's wrong with these sheep in our community who are not pushing it and they're getting paid to do it? So that's why I raise these questions to you, Juanita and other folks. If someone has to be brave and strong to ask these questions.
Um I demonstrated that when I voted no regarding appointments. And I did not see the individual um come forth to even introduce themselves to our community. Um I see that the numbers are disproportionate regarding representation of where we are as a city. Um again, it takes more than one person to challenge what is comfortable. It takes everyone collectively to work at achieving goals.
Juanita, this is kind of a strange question. If you had to do it all over again, would you have run for city council uh as the time you did, or would you prefer not to have done it at all? What is your observations and your input on that one?
I would say absolutely because you know what? The wealth of knowledge that I obtained while I was there for four years, guess what? No one can take it away. It has made me richer and a better person.
So you have no regrets, in other words?
No regrets at all.
Wow. Any other comments or other feedback, Juanita? This is gonna be your last hurrah in the sense you probably, this is one of the first time you ever had you on uh throwing out some heavy light. I really appreciate you doing it.
I appreciate you and I appreciate what you do for the community. You challenge us with these questions, these thought-provoking questions.
Well, I I assume all questions should be thought-provoking to make you think of other questions. That's what you do in the scientific revolution by Thomas Kuhn. And again, when we read books and we know how to read and engage, you have to take it to the next level. That's when it's sometimes difficult to deal with public policy and educated people in our city government because they don't read books and they don't uh take it to the next level. They just go and get their paycheck. We appreciate you. Uh we're getting ready closer. We got about a few minutes left, but if anybody wanna say something to uh Juanita before we close out, uh feel free to. Well, I guess we're not hearing a lot of from feedback. Again, welcome to reality, welcome to Omaha, Nebraska.
So how many, so how many people do you have on the call?
It, right now, we have eight, but we can have, but most people watch it through Facebook Live. And again, we get the highest numbers on Facebook because they wanna be associated with some of the issues that we talk about. Again, they wanna hot, throw their hand and hide their hat, but it could be uh ten, we've had up to twenty, sometime even more than that. We have some different numbers. But what most folks do is watch us through Facebook. And sometime Wednesday is a church night also. And so people go to church, some of the folks, uh other commitments, they know that we posted on our website, so they go back and watch it later. But one of our goals is to generate a higher number of folks who are engaged because at the end of the day, uh some of the crap that we get, we 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 bring it on ourselves by just not organizing and doing the stuff we need to do. As Malcolm X said one time, it's not that other folks are smart enough, they just out-organize us. Uh and so when you have people who, you know, you have some event in the community and thousands show up to that event, but they won't show up to something that can protect their livelihood or help the poor oppressed people, uh we got problems. I drove down Thirtieth and uh Ames uh this past weekend, and I was shocked at the number of cars getting free food. Uh some of those cars look nice, but why are we driving up and getting free pantries in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five rather? When we have government programs that should give you enough income that you shouldn't have to go and stand in line in a car, burn gas, get free food? Has anybody in the state government ever figured out a way to get more income or food distribution? So my point back to you again is with the conditions we experienced because we have not learned to pull the pinching shoes off our feet. So on that note, Juanita, thank you, my Senator Ca- Congress. Say it again?
Councilwoman.
I know, I know, I know. I'm slipping up because I'm I'm projecting where you're gonna be running in the future. Let me play that game back to you, but counsel.
You do it out there in the atmosphere.
There you go. So in other words, we're not finished with you yet. This is just a transition for you. So maybe I'm projecting where you're gonna go next because obviously, the the congressman we got is totally not in in sync with our community. And again, our both state centers, uh what's her name? Senator Deb Fisher. As far as I know, she's never been to North Omaha in her life. Uh but she represents the whole state. But on that note, I'd like to thank you for being here today. And hopefully, we can get you back at a later point to talk about some of the issues that occur in our community. So thank you. And hopefully we can get you back at a later point to talk about some of the issues that occur in our community. So thank you. Juanita, and it's been a pleasure to to have you here to talk today. So thank you.
And and thank you and thank you, our listeners, for listening to our conversation tonight. And I hope you guys have a great evening. And I would also like to thank you uh for allowing me. To serve the community, the four years that I was in office. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Be safe. May the force be with you, Baroko.